Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting of the Laramie City Council to order. Let the record reflect it, it is a business meeting and the date is October 18th, 2016, and the time is 6:30 PM. First item on our agenda, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Shumway absent. Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
There's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing. This public hearing has to do with Original Ordinance Number 1956, rezoning of approximately 18,000 acres of land on 2159 Snowy Range Road.
That's a square feet.
Pardon me?
I don't think it's acres, I think it's square feet.
I'm sorry, 18,000 square feet.
18,000 acres, I just go, what?
That's the size of Laramie proper.
And then so.
And City Clerk, would you read the notice, please?
Yes. Sorry, I had the wrong one. The City Council will hold the following public hearings at 6:30 PM on October 18th, 2016, in the City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Z-16-04 submitted by Chad Wagner requesting the establishment of the ROB residential overlay for business zoning at a property located at 2159 Snowy Range Road. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the City of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone in our audience that wishes to address council during this public hearing on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the next item. And our next item is announcements from staff.
We have no announcement.
Thank you. Next item is disclosure by council members. Do any councilors have any items that would be a conflict of interest that we're going to be discussing tonight? All right, item number six. I'll turn it over to the, actually, item number seven. I'll turn it over to the City Vice Mayor.
Okay. There are no changes to the consent or regular agenda tonight, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Somerville. City Clerk, or excuse me, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 That motion carries, Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Henry. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway absent. Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto the regular agenda, item number 10. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hanson said that somewhere in here it said first reading. I haven't seen it yet. We're doing Original Ordinance Number 1956. This will be the second reading, and the title of the ordinance is Number 1956, rezoning approximately 18,000 square feet of land located at 2159 Snowy Range Road, generally located at the northwest corner of Colorado Avenue and Snowy Range Road in Laramie from B2 Business District to B2 Business District with an ROB residential overlay for business. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1956 on second reading. There it is, right there is where it says first reading, rezoning approximately 18,000 square feet of land located at 2159 Snowy Range Road, generally located at the northwest corner of Colorado Avenue and Snowy Range Road in Laramie from B2 District to B2 District with a ROB District based on findings of fact, conclusion of law, noting the public hearing was held on October 18th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Henry, and I'll turn it over to our City Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just to reiterate, this is located along Snowy Range Road. This ROB overlay would continue to have the B2 zoning underneath it. It would allow for any residential alterations that may happen on the site to be allowed within code and would require them to conform to the R3 residential standards. There are several different sites along the Snowy Range corridor that have this type of ROB overlay, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd have any. I believe the applicants are out of town. They may have sent someone in their stead. I believe they said someone may be coming. I don't know. That would be him. So if you have any questions for him as well, sure.
Yes, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. I just have a question. The house is, there is a house where people live on that property right now, and people are living in it, right?
Mr. Aaron.
The change, or what we're changing here is only making it possible to enlarge the house. I hear it needs three bedrooms because for the family size, they need to add something to the house. Is that why we're doing this change?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Hanson, that is correct. Currently, there is a residential property there. As it sits now, it's a legal nonconforming use, so any addition to the size would not be allowed. But with this ROB overlay, it would establish that residential use as a legal use, and therefore the expansion could happen.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that in my own mind.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Two weeks ago, we had a similar rezoning request on a property there on Third Street. I refer to it as a TNT building, I guess. I would like an explanation as to what is the specific difference between this rezoning and that rezoning when it says in here is in conformance with the comprehensive plan as it does not change the base zoning of B2 and allows a historically permitted use to once again be permitted. The historical use of that building over there was an Audible dealer and decoration eco dealership and so forth, and they want it to go back to a historical use, but apparently that doesn't fit well with some folks. So what is the difference? Because you're requesting a rezoning, and I support this. I support the gentleman and the family that wants to expand their house. I don't have a problem with that. But I just read this where this refers to referring back to a historical permitted use, and now we're looking at the historical use, but a conditional use, which means, you know, it'll go back to the planning and they can add any other restrictions on there that they feel appropriate. So could you explain the basic difference between the two zoning changes here?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Vitale, currently on this site, it is still a legal nonconforming use, so as if the site that you're referring to had continued to have the use that was its historic use. However, on that site, since it has changed, it has lost that nonconforming status. However, this one, although the zoning changed around it, has continued to be used as a residential property, and so therefore leaving the use as it is and establishing this residential overlay, since it is something that happens commonly within Laramie, is more, a smaller process, so to speak, in order to continue on that use and have it again be a legal use. However, on the other side, with its loss of the nonconforming status, it does change it a little bit.
Well, the building on Third Street, the zoning there, as you stated, was a simple thing that happens quite a bit in Laramie. We've changed zoning a lot, so there's a lot of consistencies in the process for approving the zoning issue, okay? I see the difference in the use. They're going to take a residential place and expand it to continue to be a residential place. This was a distillery which laid vacant for 18 months, and therefore it seems like that 18 months wiped out all the historical use that would have applied. Because had they applied for this within that, before that 18 months expired, they could have been in that building had the remodeling done and not need any permission except the building permits they would need to do the remodeling.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Vitale, the establishment of the distillery did in fact wipe out the historic use, so therefore any nonconforming status that may have been on that site was removed with the establishment of a conforming use, which would be the distillery.
Counselor Vitale, I understand what you're, and I understand what you're saying, and we will have an opportunity next week to vent and address this whole subject you're talking about.
That just caught my eye.
And I think you've given the Planning Commission a good prep as to what your question's going to be.
Or later.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to offer, before we get into a discussion, I'm going to offer the applicants representative. You're not, you don't necessarily have to speak tonight, but if you'd like to say anything, this is an opportunity.
Yes, I can.
And would you identify yourself for the record, and it would probably help if you'd identify yourself, your relationship to the applicant?
Mayor and councilors, my name is Michael Zisneros. I am the father-in-law and father of the applicants. Basically, they appreciate you guys taking a look at this in consideration. This would make it a great opportunity for them to be able to improve the property that they are wanting to improve and allow them to make it the home that they would really like to have. It's a great environment. It's got a lot of trees. They're pretty excited about it and will help them along with the process once they get started as far as renovation goes. So on behalf of them, I'd like to thank you folks for taking this into consideration. If you have any questions of me, please feel free to.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Any discussion with council? Would anyone from the audience wish to comment on this subject? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway absent. Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. It moves on to third reading. Item number 11, Counselor Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1966, amending section 5.09.355(c) of the Laramie Municipal Code, catering permits for special events on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Henry. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, council members, I am offering this ordinance change to you. A little background on it, the state liquor division, state statute changed, and so state statute, you'll see a little more detail in your cover sheet, but basically, state statute now allows a total of 36 catering permits for sales on the same premise in any one year by a single license holder. Right now, our current code says 24. And as well, state statute now allows for an unlimited number of catering permits by a single business at a single facility on the University of Wyoming property, including the Gateway Center. So our current code does not allow for that. We're just stuck at 24 total, no matter where it is or what it is. So I'm offering you an amendment to line our current code up with state statute.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Honor. Just a question to clarify, because it says 12 malt beverage permits, right? That's not changing at all.
Correct.
So does that imply within the 36 catering permits, 12 could have alcohol served with them and whatever, 24 cannot? Or, you know, I don't try to understand the relationship of the two with one another.
Certainly. Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, malt beverage permits are acquired by a private citizen. So you, as a council member, you know, anybody sitting in this room can get a malt beverage permit for an event that they're having themselves. A catering permit can only be acquired by a retail liquor license holder and a resort liquor license holder. And a catering permit means that they're going to sell something beyond just beer. So that would include wine or any other liquor. A malt beverage is only beer, so a private citizen can get just a beer license, but if they want to do beer and wine, they have to contact a retail license holder within our city and have them pull a catering permit through us.
So just to follow up, all 36 of these licenses would allow for the serving of alcohol on those premises?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Schuster.
I heard you say that resorts and liquor license owners, no clubs or no restaurant liquor license, so neither one of those would be able to, but the resorts and the full liquor licenses would?
Correct. That is how a catering permit works. Those are the only two license holders that are allowed to pull a catering permit.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Do we have any comments from council? Anyone from the audience wishes to comment? Yes, Counselor Henry.
I have a comment. Thank you, Angie, for keeping us up with the statutes.
Thank you. Would anyone from the audience wish to speak on this subject? And City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway absent. Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 12, Counselor Henry.
Yes, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Wyoming Department of Agriculture, Consumer Health Service Division, and the City of Laramie, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. City Manager.
Mayor and council, the approval of this MOU is really housekeeping in nature. We have a standing agreement with the Department of Agriculture. We realize that that agreement had expired effective June 30th, and so this is making formal again our agreement with them to provide pool and restaurant inspections. I noted that in the cover sheet and also noted, of course, that this has been a topic of discussion, the restaurant and pool inspection program, over the last six to eight months. With the adoption of the biennial budget in June of this year, you did approve for that position to continue in the first year of the biennium, but to discontinue effective July 1st of 2017, but with the caveat that we would come back and have a work session and discuss the issue more fully. So tonight, you'll just be taking care of housekeeping with approval of the MOU, and then we've scheduled a work session December 13th, I believe, to continue our dialogue about the pool and restaurant inspection program and the future of that program.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Honor. Would we have to state in there because of the second paragraph on the background, you know, that this would run through June 30th, 2017? In the motion, there is no time limit. Should that be added for the period ending June 30th, and that we then would have to renew it depending on what we decide about a full-time inspector? Because that was apparently what's hanging in the balance here, whether we would continue the inspector.
Through you, Mayor, Counselor Hanson, the term of this memorandum is certainly passed July 1st of 2017, but you'll note in section 3 that it can be terminated with a 30-day notice from the city to the Department of Agriculture. So I think the answer to your question, although I'm not your attorney, but I think the answer is no, we don't need to insert a date because the termination clause of the agreement already allows us to exit the agreement early if we choose to do so. And I have spoken, just so you know, to the Department of Ag, to the program administrator, and they're aware of our situation. They're aware of what you approved in June, and they're aware of the fact that you'd like to have some continuing discussion in December about it, so.
Good. That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the city manager. So they'll be sending a representative to participate in that work session with us so we can hash some of these things out? Is that the plan?
Mayor Polikas and Councilmember Weaver, they can send a representative. We've discussed how we might structure the work session and whether that would be necessary or not.
Thank you.
I think it's necessary.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale.
I find it difficult to support the state coming to Laramie to inspect our restaurants. Having been in the business and knowing what the condition of a lot of restaurants are in, probably shouldn't be allowed to serve food, period. I'll retract that. I don't see, what bothers me, I guess, is all during our budget session, we heard health and safety, health and safety was the big issue to justify approving some of the agenda items in the budget. There is nothing more important than health and safety of everybody in this community plus all our visitors. Thousands of people are going to be participating in the food service. Now for them to come over and check a pool, well, we could license somebody and train somebody to check a pool. You know, that's not a very difficult process, and I could speak on experience of that, too. But anyway, so it concerns me that health and safety now, when we eliminated the food inspector from the budget, really concerns me that we will put our citizens and our visitors at risk. So I, and to me, saving a couple of bucks and risking the health and safety of our citizens is not what our responsibility is all about, folks. We're here to protect the health and safety of our people, not put it in jeopardy. And I see this program putting that in jeopardy for the sake, there's a lot of other areas that money could have been saved to save that position, so I don't know what the motivation was on that. It sure wasn't to reduce an $80 million budget by eliminating that position and have any significant impact on the services. So I will not support that.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, I'll go to Counselor Henry since she hasn't spoken.
Okay, so I agree with what Counselor Vitale said, but however, I am supporting this MOU because they are, they're giving us money, right? And that's, so we're having it in our budget. We're continuing to get the $9,200 into our budget.
Mayor Polikas and Counselor Henry, yes, this, if you vote yes on the MOU, you are voting to continue providing pool and restaurant inspections at the local level.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the $9,000 in fees that we recoup will remain coming in as revenue to offset the expense of the program.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Hanson.
Well, very similarly, if I understand this correctly, the health inspector position is in the budget or is being funded for one year, and this continues for one year this way, correct? And then we'll have to see what we'll do the second year. Is that what we're doing here?
Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, correct. You have an environmental health specialist on staff right now. You funded that position for this fiscal year, which ends June 30th, and this MOU just makes official our agreement with the Department of Health to do that, to continue that service through June 30th locally.
And we'll have to, before the new budget starts, we'll have to discuss what we'll do further on.
Correct. Your option is to keep it local beyond June 30th of 2017. Or to allow that function to revert back to the state because it is a state statutory mandated function of the Department of Ag.
And one follow-up question, has the state ever done it for us, or have we always done it locally?
You know, I asked, excuse me, Mayor, through you, I spoke with Jerry Henken, and in the time he's been with the city, going back to the early 80s, the position has been a local position here.
Always.
But as you know, there are many communities around the state where the state does provide the service, so it's just a policy discussion that the council needs to have.
Thank you.
And let's keep in mind, our discussion tonight really isn't the future of the health position. Our discussion tonight concerns the agreement between us and the state presently.
Correct.
Any further comments on this motion? Anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway absent. Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is seven yeses, one no, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto our next item, which is item number 13, and I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Pierce.
I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1949 on third and final reading, amending LMC 15.14.050, landscaping and screening standards based on finding of fact and conclusions of law, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second by Counselor Schuster. Senior Planner Bloom.
Your Honorable Mayor and Council, first of all, we did get a last-minute, oh, we did, okay, this came in, so you guys all do have a copy. Do you guys have a copy of this?
It's not dated.
While everyone's ahead of me. This one's dated. It has October 18th on it. This is the second, third reading of the Amendment to the Landscaping Code. At the last meeting, this was actually postponed and the City Council requested that this be sent back to City Arbors for final review, but also be sent to the Beautification Committee and also be sent to the Parks Recreation and Advisory Committee. In this packet, which is quite lengthy, 82 pages exactly, you will see the comments from the City Arbors. There actually, there was a second email that was sent out with a larger font comment arrangement, so it was easier to see. And then you'll also see comments from the Laramie Parks Trees and Recreation Advisory Committee. Just wanted to real quickly go over the changes that we have incorporated at the request of the City Arbors. There are just a few, and that is actually what is allowed for in your second motion. The Arbors comments generally reflected a, he did have a couple of questions. Number one, he was wondering how we calculated the living ground cover. For example, it says 75% in code, and his question was, well, how do you calculate that? What we've done at the staff levels, we've always looked at that as a mature growth rate. That is an industry standard. You don't look at a plant when it's planted. You look at what its maturity is going to be when calculating ground cover. In working with the horticulturists, the landscape architects, all those folks that do prepare the plans, when they are preparing the plans and calculating their percentages, those are what they're typically using. In addition, on page four, the Arbors had asked that we change the dates to September 30th, requiring that maintenance be done on your property, so we've incorporated that change. It also requires people to fix any dead or dying landscaping prior to the 30th of September instead of October 31st. The reason for that is because sometimes you have good weather, which allows you to do planting. You might see the university out there rolling grass, doing other stuff on some of their projects today. Sometimes we've seen them doing it over snow, planting trees in the snow. But more commonly, you do have really good weather through September, and you do have this little time during October where it's kind of questionable. There was a question about the Byzantine at the Machia Castle. It's on the bottom of page four. We don't know how that got in there. I think someone was probably searching vacation destinations in the Greek Islands and pasted that in there. It's being deleted. Dreams of the Greek escape are over. So, but that's where it is. Google it, it's Great Castle.
I did.
Yeah. So it's perfect. The Arbors had a comment in section 13 on page five about trees being indignant to Laramie. to Laramie. There are only a couple, the cottonwood, the cottonwoods close cousins, and then the willow. So we just changed it to region, so that encompasses more of the region and stuff that's accepted regionally. Likewise, on page three, the minimum size for evergreen trees was reduced. As proposed, it was five. Per his recommendation, we've gone to four. That allows for a less mature tree, one that can grow a little bit more and establish a better root system. We also have a comment regarding the tree height, again, in the greenscape option for the residential front yard landscaping. That, again, went down from five to four. And we removed the term breast height because the measurement caliber self-defining as being six inches above the ground level were breast heights at that level, so we had two conflicting measurement systems in there. I will blame that on the consultants, Clarion Associates, that draft the Unified Development Code because that was original text that they had utilized. Likewise, in his review, he had indicated a preference to actually increase some of the buffer yards from what we had proposed for the reductions. The reason for the increase was to give the plantings a better area to establish their root systems. Those are reflected in the L2 and L3 separation of buffer yards of page 10 of the arborist comments, and they are on page 10 of what's shown as exhibit one. Throughout his comments, he did mention a concern with people utilizing evergreen trees at intersections or long street right of ways. With those, we do have other provisions in code regarding clear vision area. I'm sure you've heard that term bounced around a lot. We've talked about Ninth Street, maybe Garfield Street. So those types of provisions, those actually dictate where some of these more full or evergreen trees can be planted, so you won't have to make that change in the landscaping ordinance. So those comments and those recommendations, as well as the changes in some points for trees, those have been incorporated based on the arborist comments. We have also included the comments that were from the Parks Trees and Advisory Committee. Todd Fieser was very nice to present that to the committee and write up this wonderful memo summarizing their comments. They did have three of their members comment on this. Two of them were very minimal, and the third one had a lot of comment. Those are included in your packet. Some of the comments from Board Member Number Three were included. For example, removal of the castle clause that has been taken out. There were some other items in there, and there's some other just opinions on development in Laramie that were included in there. Regarding other changes that are in the second motion, we do fall back on the proposed changes that staff had recommended at the last reading that revolved around the prior request to try to figure out a way to give more points for items such as public art. I'll real quickly just walk through what we've done there, and one other change. One change we have done is we have proposed that the point award allocation for living lawn grass, so green grass, be increased from, well, you get more credit. Right now, you get one point towards landscaping for every 800 square feet of grass. That's 10 by 80, that's a pretty large chunk. We've actually proposed that you get one point for every 200 square foot. For what you used to get 1.4, you'll now get four. What that would do is, that would encourage developers to utilize more green grass, which as you can see by the beautification committee, that's a preference on their review as well. Also, that's, does it be a more visual preference in the community? Right now, as the ordinance is drafted, you actually get more points awarded for installing rock instead of greenery. So we've given that option to allow developers to, they want to green up their site a little bit, they'll get some more points. Likewise, we've taken a stab at the bottom of this table on exhibit 11 at preparing point values for different types of features, realizing that we really can't predict or talk about all types of art. So we still have a determination for, as determined by the department, but all of these art pieces do require conformance with the public art plans process regarding a call for artists and vetting it through that system. And at the last meeting, there was a discussion on square feet of covered area versus fountain area. That has been corrected. With the beautification committee memo that we have, that you did receive this afternoon, the highlights of the memo state that they do not support the reduction in landscaping from 20 to 15%, which is proposed in this ordinance, and staff hasn't proposed change. They have supported the zero scape option, but wish, asked us to inform developers that zero scape, zero scape can be more expensive to maintain over the long term. They do support the reduction in living landscaping from 75% to 65% ground cover. They do support the modification of the requirements to reflect industry standards, which is proposed in here. However, they did recommend that we look at allocating points on tree size, and we look at reviewing that. We do have that reduction that is included in here. It's not a wholesale reduction, it's just for the evergreen trees, but it is one that staff can look at for future updates. They do support the change in how we calculate perimeter landscaping, which is proposed to exclude driveways and pedestrian sidewalks. They do not support the sliding scale, which is not, which is still in this ordinance on page two of, the top of page two of your packet, there's a sample motion if one of you wishes to make a motion to remove the sliding scale. So they do not support that. And they do not support a reduction in buffer yard requirements. We, as noted, after the arborist reviewed this, we did increase some of those buffer yards, the L2 and the L3, just slightly. So they're hit or miss kind of support, kind of conflict a little. They did look at future discussion items. Those are eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Those items are actually, a lot of them aren't included in this amendment. This really dealt with perimeter landscaping and not internal parking lot island, those types of items. They have some, asked us to investigate some younger trees, developing points for athletic and recreational fields that are installed, and continued work with the city arborist and looking at public art. Regarding these items, these are all things we can take into account for future amendments. We do incorporate the city arborist now in all of our site plan review projects, just to see if the proposed landscaping appears logical and does make sense and will not die. It's been a while since we've had someone try to plant a couple palm trees in town, but that's why we have him in there, just to make sure we have species that actually do work in the community. And that's why we include him in that process. With that, open any questions you may have regarding this ordinance or the proposed amendments?
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Vitale?
Yeah, two. One, and I guess these are more for clarification, on the letter from the beautification committee, on number one, they do not support the reduction of overall required landscaping from 20% to 15%. But down on number three, they do support the reduction of living landscaping materials from 75% to 65%. What's the, what do you draw the line between landscaping materials and required landscaping?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Vitale, I can address that. Say you have a, one, let's say a 10,000 square foot site. Under current code right now, 75% of that site is supposed to have some type of, sorry, 20% of that site, or 2,000 square feet, is supposed to have some type of landscaping. Typically, what a developer will do is they'll have a parking lot, they'll pave it, the other 20% will be the landscaped area. Of that 20%, 75% or, I'm not going to do the math right now, but 75% of that 2,000 square feet is going to have to be living, that's 1,500 square feet. With the change, what we're essentially allowing, what number one is allowing, is that that 2,000 square foot of landscaped area, which could be a combination of rocks and grass and trees and bushes, that'll be reduced to 1,500 square feet. In that reduced area, it appears the beautification committee is not in support of allowing less green space in that 1,500 square feet.
So you're saying if somebody wants to do a zero scape, as far as their landscaping, they're still going to have to conform to the living materials in the zero scape area?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Vitale, if they want to do a zero scaping, this would not apply to them because there's a separate provision for a zero scape treatment, where it stands on its own as independent of.
Of the living section?
Of three, correct, of three. They would still have to conform to one, which is the 20% slash proposed 15%.
Very good. And the second thing I had, and it goes to attachment A, page two, and also page four. In page two, under number two, alternative equivalent compliance, now under A, it talks about any and all plans and documents submitted shall be approved by a professional specialist with demonstrable expertise in landscaping, such as a landscape architect or landscape That seems to broaden the definition because it's my understanding, under our current code, that a commercial development must hire a landscape architect to do the landscape plan. And my question has always been, who on our staff has an equal professional level as a landscape architect to review a landscape architect's work? But then, on page four, under landscaping plan preparation, it talks about a professional horticulturist, nursery man, or design professional shall be consulted, you know, for the installation and the type of materials, et cetera, et cetera. To me, that, I think, again, is a little broader definition of who can do your landscape, you could get a landscape planner. That doesn't take too much effort to get a certificate to be a landscape planner, you know, from, well, Scott's Fertilizer used to do that program. But anyway, I'm trying to see if we can either condense these or be consistent in the language as to what professionals are acceptable to do these plans, other than a landscape architect. Now, somebody doing a residential home can get, that doesn't need a landscape architect, right? If I may.
City Planner.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Vitale, I'll catch all your comments real quick. We don't require commercial plants to be prepared by a landscape architect. We don't require residential plans to be prepared by a landscape architect. It just needs to be a design professional. Typically, I mean, it could be the average, the employee at one of the local gardener shops, which typically it is, which they understand what's going on in the town. When it comes to reviewing a landscape plan, all we are looking at is a point distribution to see if what they've proposed adds up to what is required. We do provide, just advice based on what we've known in the field, what we might hear back from the arborist, saying, hey, you can't plant oak tree or these trees within five feet of each other because they will be competing in the future. So the intent is not to require a landscape architect to do the standard landscaping for commercial developments. And you do bring up a good point, that the language between this alternative equivalent compliance section on page two and the landscape plan preparation, they do not add up, they're not the exact same as they could be. That likely is because when we were adopting the Unified Development Code, it initially proposed that all commercial site plans be prepared by a landscape architect. That was a hot button issue that we amended and changed to come up with that language that called for horticulturist, design professional. But there is no requirement for that landscaping to have to be prepared by a landscape architect. Now, the zero scape proposal that you do see on page four, I believe, when you're preparing a commercial zero scape plan, that requires preparation by a landscaped architect. And again, we're relying on their industry profession, their professional stamp, that they are being truthful and honest when preparing their plan that is going to work in the community. Again, all we're looking for is, do the points add up to what is required? So we're not judging their professional work, we're just, I guess, checking their math. That's all we're doing when it comes to looking at the planting done by a landscape architect.
Okay, so what do you, what is the minimum square footage of a commercial building that requires a landscape architect? If you had, if you built, say, a 5,000 square foot building to be used commercially, you don't need a landscape architect, do you, to do the landscape plan, compared to somebody building a 5,000 square foot home on the same size lot?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Vitale, the only way you'd ever be required to have a landscaped architect, well, right now, there's no way we could require that, period. It could be small development, large development, huge development, we have no requirement. Under the proposed changes here, we are proposing on page three, section four, the zero scape water conserving landscaping option. That is the only commercial application where a landscaped architect would be required. And that is because we as staff and we believe that a landscape architect is qualified to understand what a true zero scape plan is and prepare a true zero scape maintenance plan. And if there's a stamp on there, we're not going to question what they've said when they're choosing their plant material.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Pierce?
So, Charles, just to help me understand, there is a, on our cover sheet, there is a move to amend attachment A of original ordinance 1949 by substituting exhibit A to reflect changes recommended by the city arborist. If we go forward with that amendment, that will include the arborist changes, the changes recommended by Parks and Rec, if I heard you correctly?
No.
No? No? Okay. Tell me which one of the Parks and Rec? Which one? How? The?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, should clarify that in that motion's exhibit one, and it will include the changes by the city arborist, and it will include the changes that were proposed regarding the public art at the last meeting. So it includes the increase in point value for landscaping, and it gives us that guide for, like, fountains in public art. Regarding the comments that are received from the beautification committee and the Parks Trees and Advisory Board, those we reviewed and didn't see that they were necessary to be amended and put into code. We went with. We went with our staff's, um, proposal.
But if I, if I could add that, uh, some of the beautification recommend, recommendations are also part of what the arborist said, right? Except for, from what I can tell here, one and six. And seven is kinda covered, right?
That's correct, technically kinda.
Kinda?
No. It's not.
No, you're saying?
It's not.
I, I read it as, as almost.
I, I like what.
Why don't we, why don't we refer that question to our planner? Referring to item seven, right?
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, it's not as bad as when they reviewed it, let's put it that way. Uh, right now, the L two buffer yard, as it stands, is eight feet. Staff proposed six, um, arborist, oh, sorry, staff proposed five, arborist had six, we're still seeing a reduction. Um, for the L three, right now, it's fifteen, um, staff proposed ten, arborist said twelve. So we kind of like took a step back and then a smaller step back forward for the L one, or the L two and the L three. So those are, so yes, I could say we still don't agree with number seven.
Okay, okay, but closer, closer, okay. That, that just helps me a lot, thank you very much, and I'll let other council members add to my, what I think is clear now, but might be confusing later.
Question is Counselor Schuster.
Not questions, it's a comment, would you like me to wait?
Yeah, why don't we wait? I was gonna, council, would, would it be appropriate to put the, if there's support for that amendment, to put that on the floor, discuss that, get it off or on, get it off, approve it, disapprove it, and then move on to the general?
Well, kind of, we're still, we're still discussing it as part of the regular motion.
That's what I was wondering, or, or do you want to just discuss everything and then put it on later on? Sounds like we want to discuss everything and put it on later.
Yes.
Let's do that, that'd be fine. Other questions before we get to comments? And by the way, before we get to comments, we also have Mr. Harris here from the Alliance, and I know that he would like to speak as, on behalf of the, uh, chamber and the Alliance, and I think maybe before we made comments, it'd be worthwhile to listen to him. But I did have a question. Mr. Bloom? You're not getting away yet. Uh, when the Laramie Beautification Committee reviewed this, was there a member of staff there, uh, helping them through this ordinance, or did they just review it independently on their own, without any consultation from staff?
Honorable Mayor and Council, there was not a planning staff member present at that meeting.
Okay, and then my next question is, to your knowledge, when we, when, to ha, to have a better understanding of this whole ordinance, we actually went through and viewed different sites, and you explained to us as we reviewed those sites as to what it would look like and without, if we were to adhere to this. So we had a visual picture of, of the differences between what we're doing now and what would happen if we approved this. To your knowledge, did they do anything like that, or did they do any research, or? It sounds like Counselor Somerville might have an answer to that, but I'll ask you, and then I'll go to Counselor Somerville.
Honorable Chair, from what I understand, they did arrange for a tour. Um, it was based on the memorandum that was in the packet here, it's now in the back of the packet. Um, it was more of a self-guided, self-initiated, um, one, I don't know how many people actually went on that tour.
Thank you, maybe Counselor Somerville can help me out with it.
Yeah, I certainly can. Um, and I think, if memory serves me correctly, I'd have to look at the notes, the city arborist was the only city staff member at the meeting, I think, unless, there was Parks and Rec, no, that I'm forgetting, no. Um, and on the tour, um, so there was a tour set up, and the beautification committee decided to do a tour inside the building, so they took all the pictures and put them up and Google Earthed it and.
So they did.
Did a virtual tour from, yeah.
All right, thank you.
On all the sites that Charles had put in the packet.
That's what I needed to know. All right, Counselor Schuster.
Um, were there members of council there? Is you? I thought maybe more than one, I'm just curious.
Any other questions for our city planner? Counselor Vitale?
Yeah, was Walmart used as an example of what happens when you don't enforce a code?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Vitale.
I don't think that question needs to be answered.
She was an eyesore.
Let me go, let, let's do this, let's listen to what Mr. Harris has to say, and then we can go, we can have our general discussion.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for listening to me again. I was not present at the CLDC, the Community Liaison Development Commission meeting, uh, which is a subcommittee of the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, but I am here on behalf of their chairman, um, Roger Strube. Uh, the committee members consist of Charles Bloom, who was present, uh, when these discussions of the UUDC and the landscaping ordinance were, uh, being batted around and suggestions made. Jake Snyder, Paul Greaser, Ray McEvoy, Rob Garland, uh, Tammy Reed, Dave Walworth, and Warren Greaser are all of those committee members. And what they've done is, based on feedback from the community and development standards and issues that they've came across or have been reported to them, is they've, they've taken time, um, to review these codes, uh, the landscaping requirements and said, hey, we think this is, this is what we believe is possible. So, um, and that's where staff recommendations come from, um, as they're, they're combining the recommendations from the CLDC. So we support the staff recommendations and the changes and amendments, and we definitely support the, uh, beautification committee, and we understand there may be a little bit of difference. What we would add, I've got some talking points, and I don't know how in-depth you want to go into this, but, um, the CLDC is okay with the sliding scale for larger developments that represent a maximum reduction of less than twenty-five percent if a discretionary portion is added on top of that, say, up to fifteen percent on property size, then up to ten percent on the discretion of the city planner. And I think you've already built in that, that discretionary a little bit, um, for the planner, when they look at, you know, sites specific, every, every site's not going to be the same, um, but the intent is that we make the city, uh, a more attractive place, more attractiveness makes better quality of life, people enjoy. So I would ask that, uh, the council go ahead and support the state, uh, the staff recommendations for this, and we can also go ahead and support the city beautifications, and we can just say, and these are recommendations from the city beautification committee, that if you want to go one step farther, then we can think that you as a developer are going above and beyond the requirements. We think, I think that would be appropriate. We definitely want to support the beautification committee, we're not at odds with, with them on this, maybe just a little bit of the language, but I think it can all be worked out within discretionary of the city planners. I would be in favor of that, if, if you want more detail or some more talking points, but I think, um, I trust your good judgments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there, does anybody have any clarification questions for? Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, uh, Counselor Schuster, I know you had some comments.
Um, a lot of it goes with what he said there. We have a beautiful high school now, the thing is tremendous, it looks great, but did they come before the planning commission and ask for a reduc, reduction in trees and bushes? Yes, they did. We've had several larger projects of churches, businesses, and things like that, ask for small reductions, not anything huge. High school with their landscaping looks absolutely great, there's no problem with it. So on this, when they ask for larger sub, I'm not going to use the word subdivision, larger projects to have a small amount of reductions, I think that it's completely acceptable. We just talked about this, how they were supporting on larger projects. One of the things I thought was great, and it's probably not really landscaping, but I wanted to thank the city, we talked about the sidewalk at about thirty-fourth and Grand, it's done. A person I watched struggle with a wheelchair that basically had to go out on the street for a while on Grand Avenue to get up it, now can stay on the entire sidewalk. We have a little bit of dirt and landscaping still to do, but it's done, and I know it's done by the city. Another great thing is, I'm on the planning commission, I'm their liaison, a lot of you don't know, but at the last planning commission, we did not have our meeting after that because of, uh, some other commitments, that, uh, we got property donated to us for a pocket park. This developer had started his project before the UUDC, he didn't have to do it. We had put a park out there for future designation, we were looking at it, and it was funny because nobody noticed that the way we were accessing the park that we suggested to be there was off an alley. So now they moved the park so it will be a pocket park on the street, which I think's a really good thing. They didn't have to do it. They went above and beyond because they said it was the right thing to do. There's a lot of people that will do this above and beyond thing. I wanted to thank, I'm gonna say it anyway, I want to thank the greasers for doing that. It was Paul and his son, I've known him for a long time, and they donated property for a pocket park. They didn't have to do it, it wasn't required by them, but they did it. So there's a lot of people that are doing the right thing. We're throwing a huge amount of rules here, we're making it difficult on a lot of groups to get this done. If we put this amendment in here right, the way it is, right now, you're gonna have people that, yes, are gonna go above and beyond, and they're gonna make it look beautiful. But we also have a different thing, that if the landscaping requirements basically almost go away if we go build a new building downtown, because they have a different set of regulations. So if we do a bunch of amendments, I would love to see that if someone that is building a new building downtown is held accountable to the same things here. We made a bank that did an addition, we made them do a check in lieu of, and we put trees across the street from it, and it looks great. So I think if we're gonna start enforcing this on businesses, we ought to be equal. If we're gonna talk amendments, I want amendments. If we're gonna talk about just this, then, then fine, let's talk about just this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Counselor Henry?
Um, okay, so in response to the, well, not just in response, but the Laramie Beautification Committee letter, um, they do not support the reduction in the site perimeter landscaping for larger developments, and I agree with that. That's one of the things that I did not like about the, um, changes in the ordinance. And so, right now, I would like to move to delete LMC fifteen point one four point zero five zero point F point three point B, as shown in attachment A of the original ordinance number nineteen forty-nine in its entirety.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, motion for amendment and a second by Counselor Somerville, let's discuss that directly.
Where is that at?
It is on page two, oh, is it all right if I answer?
Please do.
Uh, on page two of our cover sheet, so, and it is what, uh, Mr. Bloom told us that we could use to, regarding the sliding scale.
To eliminate the sliding scale.
To eliminate the sliding scale.
So as a help to everyone, what this refers to is eliminating, could you explain it so that we understand what we're, what, what the amendment is?
Well, it is, um, I would have to find it. So it, it's, maybe Mr. Bloom could explain it. Except he's busy.
Mr. Bloom?
Vicki, which attachment are you referring to?
The cover sheet.
The cover sheet.
Page two.
Could you in layman, could you in layman's terms explain?
The sliding scale.
What, what the sliding scale is and what the amendment, how the amendment would affect, um, the proposed changes?
Honorable Mayor, yes. When you mean the proposed changes, do you mean the proposed motion we have second on the thing?
Yes.
Well.
No, 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 she proposed it all, the entire motion.
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, that motion as proposed, um, honestly, the idea was it would be the third motion, the next one introduced, because if you were to, because that, what that will do is delete the sliding scale that's found on page nine, is the one that says, a development that is between two and five acres in size gets a fifteen percent reduction in required units, five to ten acres gets a twenty percent reduction, ten acres or greater gets a twenty-five product, uh, percent reduction in landscape units. Um, that is one that was proposed by the CDLC and still remains, uh, the CDLC and the Laramie Business Chamber Alliance support that still. Now, if that motion were to be approved, and then you were to move to amend to substitute exhibit one, it'll be back, and you'll have to delete it again.
May I change my motion?
Yes.
Um, oh, but we can't do it, I was gonna say, I could change it to say, instead of, um, attachment A of original ordinance number nineteen forty-nine in its entirety, I could say, attachment A, exhibit one.
And Honorable Mayor.
But we can't, we haven't accepted that yet. Is that what you're saying? I withdraw my motion at this point.
All right, we're back to the main motion.
So.
Thank you for being reasonable. Where are we at? Vice Mayor?
So I move to amend attachment A of original ordinance number nineteen forty-nine by substituting exhibit A to reflect changes recommend, oh, sorry, exhibit one to reflect changes recommended by the city arborist.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, and for my clarity, that is what was recommended at the top of our cover sheet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Schuster?
I need Mr. Bloom back up here.
Good.
Brian. Okay, since I used the high school as an example, how many additional trees compared to what they have now, and how many additional bushes compared to what they have now, would they had to have increased to meet this amendment? Cause I do remember the figure, I just don't remember if you do.
Honorable Mayor and Chair, I'm going to stall while I find that answer.
I'll give you a few minutes, Counselor Henry.
I would just like to point out that the high school is a different project than a big box store that comes in with a parking lot that covers the most of the acreage.
Thank you.
Parking lot on the high school?
Counselor Schuster?
I'm talking about a different.
She got to rebuke me?
Hold it now, we're going back and forth. If you'd like the floor, I'm more than willing to rec, no, she wanted a ton.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm not, uh, let's see. I'm not really able to find that high school stuff, I, I do believe it was, I believe it was fifty bushes approximately.
Fifty trees.
Fifty trees, and.
I think it was two hundred and fifty bushes.
Correct, and, uh, what they proposed was an alternative, where they did do some relocations, but that was a, a reduction in the, in the area, and as part of their alternative, they had increased some of their, their sod area and stuff, but yes, there was a, quite a reduction in the amount of trees on site, and yes, what Counselor Schuster said, uh, appears accurate.
May I continue?
You should may.
Okay, um, I have noticed right now in the football games, they're probably parking a good eighty to a hundred vehicles on the dirt where the, um, next grade school's gonna go. So their parking lot, even though I think it's very good size, in two different areas, cause they have one on one side of the school, one on the other side of the school, is not adequate, and that, um, they're gonna have a problem once the new grade school is built, and, uh, I think their parking lot is the size of a good box store right now for the over a thousand students that they have, that, uh, I would say over half of them are driving vehicles. So, um, if we want to compare it, we compare it, if we say that's not correct, it's not correct, but that's my opinion on it, and, um, even if we had taken half of those trees away and they had to put a hundred and twenty-five more shrubs and twenty-five more trees, um, I think that what is asked for a very large, uh, very large section of property with a huge amount, even though they have a tremendous amount of grass, and they have landscaping boulders and everything else in there, and trees were donated that were put in the island that was not part of them, it was done by volunteer work, and, um, a different group that donated the trees, I still would like to compare them.
Point of order, are we talking about the?
We're talking about a reduction, which. We're talking about a reduction, which we have amendment on the floor.
I thought we were accepting Randy, the city arborist.
Recommendations.
Recommendations.
But she's made an amendment too.
Could you repeat the am-
You made an amendment?
No.
No!
All right, we have an amendment on the floor. The amendment, would you, if you could, City Clerk, could you read the amendment that's on the floor, which is what we're talking about?
To amend Attachment A of original ordinance number 1949 by substituting Exhibit One to reflect changes recommended by the city arborist.
Okay, that's what our discussion is. Does, does anyone need clarity as to what changes are recommended by the city arborist? Okay. Further comments or discussion by, yes, council, or planner, City Planner?
No, don't make me a counselor, no.
Not yet, anyway.
That motion will also incorporate the changes that staff had proposed regarding the increase in point value for green areas, lawn grass, and also the public art incorporation in those units showed on page 10 in that table, so those are also in there.
So the, I guess a quick question I have to you, if I may, does staff fully support the recommendations made by the arborist? And planning, does the planning, planning department support those recommendations?
Honorable Mayor and Council, yes, we do.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Question, Counselor Schuster.
Aren't we making an amendment to a possible amendment that's coming forward?
No, we're making amendment to the main motion that's on the floor.
She withdrew.
She withdrew?
She withdrew that. Okay.
But I haven't heard, I haven't heard the amendment of Attachment One, was that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we clear?
No.
So we can go, all right, Counselor Hanson is not clear.
On, on the original ordinance, on page, what, Attachment A, page nine, there is this reduction included there, 15% reduction for two to five acres, 20% for five to 10, and 25 for 10 acres and above. Is that what we're trying to include instead of a sliding scale? That, you know, I-
All right, let, let's go to the planner.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, what this amendment's doing is it's taking the Attachment A right now and substituting with a new Attachment A, which is labeled Exhibit One. I believe that, right, and this will include the sliding scale in it, I believe that the next motion, there might be an amendment to try to strike that section so we can talk about it in the right order. So what we're doing is changing out, we're doing step two of the ordinance, or step two of this process, which is swapping on Attachment A to recognize the comments by the city arborist, to recognize the proposals by city staff, the changes for art, to get that all cleared up and, and off the table. Then there'll likely be another discussion that's going to pop up directly related to the sliding scale, which is going to essentially be the exact same motion that Counselor Henry withdrew just a few minutes ago.
Can I ask a follow-up? Is there a sliding, sliding scale of some sort in the end if we were to approve this page nine on, on this thing?
Honorable Mayor and Council, for the time being, yes. And the next item will likely be a discussion based on whether or not to keep the sliding scale in the ordinance that you just amended.
City Manager?
Council, basically, you are amending by substitution. You're substituting Exhibit A for the ordinance you had on the floor. You need to vote on that amendment, and then you could further amend Exhibit One, but you have to vote to, to substitute Exhibit One first, and Exhibit One does include your sliding scale fee. Counselor Henry, as Charles said, may move an amendment after you amend by substitution to further amend Exhibit One. Are we all confused?
Got it. All right. Are we clear? Counselor Vitale?
Is zero scape included in the proposed amendment?
Yes.
Bloom, you're not going anywhere. Stay up here. So, repeat that question, please.
In the proposed amendment, is zero scape included?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel Vitale, the zero scape option is still included. The only changes that are being made are the ones that I summarized at the beginning of the presentation.
And relative to the zero scape, how do you classify artificial turf?
Honorable Mayor and Council, there is already a provision in the code that says artificial turf shall not be used as landscaping or satisfying any points. Artificial turf is not an acceptable zero scape option either.
What about athletic fields?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the athletic fields, those essentially are part of a use area, so they are treated the same as a building footprint. So again, let's say you had a 1,000 square foot lot, 70, or a big chunk of it was athletic field that is artificial turf or whatever, we'd only be looking at the areas outside of that athletic field for that landscaping requirement.
So an athletic field that has artificial turf is excluded from the whole landscape plan of that property then?
Honorable Mayor and, and Council, yes, is excluded.
Okay, are there other questions or confusion concerning what's on the floor in Exhibit A? This is what we're approving right now, and then we'll get back to the main motion after we take a break.
Same as a motion to substitute?
This is, yes.
This is the motion to substitute.
Doesn't sound like there's any, any further comments. Let me open it up to any members of the public that would like to speak on this amendment to the main motion. Not seeing any, so I'll go to the City Clerk and ask her for a roll call.
Can she reiterate what we're substituting?
Absolutely.
Please.
The motion is to amend Attachment A of original ordinance number 1949 by substituting Exhibit One to reflect changes recommended by the city arborist.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Hanson?
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Shumway, absent, Schuster?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
Uh, yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Pliegus?
Yes.
That is seven yeses, one no, and zero, and one absent, excuse me.
Thank you, so we're back to the main motion, but before we, for further discussion, let's take about a 10-minute break. Back to the main motion. Clerk? I think there's amendment that needs, I believe there's an amendment that needs to, wants to be proposed.
I would like to move to delete LMC 15 dot 14 dot 050 dot F dot 3 dot B as shown in Exhibit One of the ordinance 1949 as amended.
Second.
There's a motion and a, and a second for the amendment, and I'll go back to Counselor Henry.
So-
Yes, City Clerk?
Um, may I ask a question of Counselor Henry? Did you mean to say Attachment A rather than Exhibit One in your motion?
Whatever we just changed it to. My, it should be Attachment A. Are you sure? Yeah?
Mr. Bloom, why don't you come on up to the-
Can you give us a page?
Plenty of information, Your Honor, it's actually been labeled as both, but I think during our-
It says Exhibit One.
Honorable Mayor and Council, it was labeled as Exhibit One for the first motion, so you'd have something you could, you could call it a name to substitute it, it now assumes a role as Attachment A.
Okay, so now it's Attachment A.
Okay, there's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. I'm gonna go back to Counselor Henry for her to explain.
Okay.
Some more explanation on what she's amending.
Okay, so on page nine of Attachment A, the entire Section B of three will be deleted per my motion. My question to Mr. Bloom is, what happens to this chart? Does that chart incorporate, or that's, that chart is already in there, it stays, but this 20% reduction, the sliding scale, is just based on your number of acres?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor, and Counselor Henry, the table will remain, the only changes will be those four subsections you see in the middle of the page. So the table will remain, the sliding scale would be gone.
So for me to be clear?
That's my intention.
We are eliminating 15% reduction in required units, we're eliminating 20% reduction, the suggestion that we have a 20% reduction in required units, and the suggestion we have a 25% reduction. Am I clear, am I right on that?
That is correct.
Okay, does everyone in Council have an understanding of that, what we're talking about?
Just to clarify further, in the introduction to this part, it said something like planting requirements in Table 15, 14, 50, that's the table below, oh, no, that's number three, right? That refers to three. So is that affected in any way, shape, or form?
Mr. Bloom?
By eliminating that?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Hanson, no, it is not affected.
Okay, good enough, because it's mentioned in that introduction there.
Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Should this amendment pass, question for Planner Bloom, then we will be retaining our current levels of these requirements as they stand in code now.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Weaver, no, we will still have the reductions that were proposed initially and as amended based on the arborist and staff's arts criteria. The only thing that will be removed is the sliding scale that's recommended by the CDLC for the larger developments.
Thank you, so this then addresses the sliding scale?
Correct.
And no other piece of this? Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Comments? Let's go.
So, just reporting back from what the Beautification Committee's discussion was, this was probably the most hotly contested topic at the Beautification Committee. If I had to grab one point that they really were against was the sliding scale. The discussion really centered around the idea that the, when these larger developments come in, they impact the community greatly, and when there's not enough landscaping up there, it becomes a problem, and then that falls back to the community to pick up the slack and the money, and all of that that's required, whether it's putting trees, you know, out front in the right of ways or whatever to do more landscaping. So they, they felt very strongly that this should be taken out. And on a personal note, as a council member, I, I've supported that from the beginning, and I still support taking this out, and I hope we do.
Vice Mayor?
So I'm wondering, Mr. Harris, do, regarding your organization, do you have any comments for us?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, let me just, just say this. If it is a large-scale development and they are planting trees in a, in a right-of-way or a sidewalk, and they do come in, and they do plant 150 trees, and it is in the right-of-way, who maintains it? Who waters that? Who trims them? Does that become the city's responsibility? Question, if it's a right-of-way, what happens if the business goes out? The trees die, who replaces that? Does it become a city responsibility? So that's all I would ask, is, it may be a reduction, and it may be, it may be an issue that we want to address, but I would say that let the flexibility lay with the development and the planners when they come in. Give those people, give the staff the option to work it out in the details, because every site specific, if we're talking a big box like Walmart, do we have those developments come every day? No. If, if we're talking the high school, do we hold the high school to a different standard, or the public entities to a different standard than we do the business? Because then it ultimately falls back on us. If we didn't give a waiver to the high school for 5%, and you look at, in the packet, I think their percentage was 1.26 compared to Fox Theater, which was 2.69% of landscaping for their project? I mean, think about the hundreds of thousands that would have cost the high school, and then continued maintenance. So again, I defer to your good judgment. You've been here longer, and you've dealt with the UDC longer than me, but I just ask to support the staff recommendations. Give flexibility to them, and we'll abide by the decision of the council, but just a discussion point.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. If I remember, the original, longtime discussion of this point was also, I can't remember whether it was really a discussion of price calculation of expense, or rather a discussion of, when we looked at the pictures, that it was getting a little cluttered, it was getting too dense, too tight. And if that's the case, I think in the introduction of this paragraph B, there is a word that says "shall be reduced" on each perimeter length. Maybe the way to go is, instead of say "shall," "may be reduced" according to what it will look like eventually. That leaves it, yes, a little wishy-washy, but it's not this kind of ironclad statement, you know, that "shall be, shall be, shall be reduced," looking at it from a point of view of what looks good in this particular instance. And, and that addresses the question of price calculation, but also the question of the beauty of the whole thing, or the, the looks of the whole thing. So this is, I, I'm coming late to this, but this would be my suggestion, to go that way, to leave it a little flexible, instead of, you know, throwing the baby, no, the trees out with the bathwater or whatever. So, I don't know, maybe that's a way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. With what you just said, some things look beautiful but aren't functional. We landscaped Adams Street towards Cottonwood Estate. I always come out on Venture Drive and then want to turn on Adams, it's a stop sign. And I would suggest everybody try that once, because even though the beautification is beautiful out there, they put it in the center island, it's now probably five and a half feet tall, and it's hard to even see a car coming down Adams Street now. So you have to pay extremely good attention when you pull out of there because of the center island landscaping. So, I think some things look nice, but are they functional, and are they a safety hazard? There's gonna be an accident there one of these days, and I've heard talk of the safety of the people.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm undecided on the amendment, I want to hear some more comments and discussion, and I like Counselor Hanson's suggestion. What concerns me is that in the discussion of "shall" versus "may," I think the concern is that everyone will ask, "May we?"
Sure.
And, and, and that's, that's the issue between the, the, somewhat more set in stone versus the, it's possible you don't have to do this. However, the arguments about flexibility are, are compelling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To kind of address that train of thought, I think so, and I, Mr., if Planner Bloom can correct me if I'm wrong, our, the planning staff already has 10% administrative ability to make adjustments to these types of things without having to go through the Planning Commission and whatever, and that's a fairly new thing. We increased that percentage, I believe, last year or the year before, and they've asked for some time to test drive that flexibility. So they have that flexibility right now, and if it looks like we need to increase that in the future, then we need to have that discussion, but in the discussions previous, it's been, let us try this out and see how, how this works, but they do have 10% right now. And I do agree with the comments of Counselor Weaver, that whatever we set the floor at, or if you give an option for a floor, I think for the majority of applicant, I mean, that's what we're gonna see, and we're still gonna hear complaints all the time about where the floor is at for this kind of stuff. One of the other things that I forgot to mention, and it's, it's not in the menu, in, in the menu, in the memo from the Beautification Committee, but- memo from the beautification committee, but one of the other things that was discussed there is that that table in the staff packet showing the percentages of landscaping versus cost was really persuasive to them in that if the industry standard is 3% and under, there was a discussion at that committee that there shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be anything given if your costs are 3% or under, even if it's a big project. We need to keep everybody accountable the same, just like Mr. Harris said, whether it's the small business, the medium business, the large business, whatever that is, they need to be held to the same landscaping standards so that they are the same. They all have the same 10% variance. Nobody gets special treatment because they're a two-acre lot versus the guy that's 1.8 acres, something along those lines. I think that for beautification, I think it's really important that we work with these large lot developers, work within our 10% administrative adjustment. And then if they still think that that is a problem, they always have the option of coming to the planning commission and asking for a variance, and they can go through that process, just like the high school did. And that's a possibility. So there is still another option there for developments where it just, for some reason, just doesn't absolutely make sense, but I would caution the council in giving this "may" option or leaving this in here, because you're going to, every application is going to come in. One thing that we've heard constantly is that the developers are concerned about cost, and if they can do less landscaping, it costs less money, they're going to do less landscaping, and then that money, that beautification and everything is going to come back on the community. So I think we have the flexibility with what we have, and I think the planning commission gives an additional flexibility on this stuff, and we should treat everybody the same, which is why we need to take this out.
Thank you. I actually have a question for our planning, our planning department. Is landscaping reduction a viable reason for a variance?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have had circumstances where people have applied for a variance for landscaping. I think Counselor Schuster was mentioning one up on Superior Court. There could be some unique circumstances on the site that could warrant a reduction. In some areas, a lot of landscaping is crowded just due to existing buildings, existing situations where there are some criteria that would work. We also do have our administrative, minor administrative modification process that allows up to the 20% reduction. We're presently going through one of those right now on the site where they have shown that if they were to conform with the code, that the maturity of the tree crowns would actually interfere with each other, so we're recommending that they have that reduction.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Schuster?
Don't mean to pick on people, but I would like to talk about three different landscaping areas. There's one house on Grand Avenue that I think is just beautiful. They have a waterfall out front, they have vétérine rocks. I call them, I call them vétérine rocks, it's probably not the right technology for it, but they did a beautiful job. And then another person did landscaping is at Third and Grand, and that was called landscaping is outdoor area. It wouldn't be outside that Third and Grand, the parking lot that they turned into a panels and the wood sticking up, wasn't that considered landscaping?
Honorable Mayor and Council, no. That was their-
You had permits for all that?
Yes, that was actually permitted. That is an exterior patio. Instead of using like wrought iron or other types of fencing, he chose to use wood for more of the rustic feel and the plexiglass. We do not have any adopted codes for that development to guide us on how to design exterior patios in the downtown, and also the downtown design guidelines are also silent on outdoor patios.
Okay, and then the last one, and maybe it's already been resolved. Are we requiring landscaping on an airport hangar that's in a secure fenced area?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, there are some provisions for some landscaping requirements on certain elements of that project. I'm not exactly certain which ones. I do know our other planner in our offices working with the applicant on that one, and there are some upcoming code text amendments that are being worked through the process. And we're evolving the city arborist in that one as well to ensure that we're making sure that landscaping fits the aviation needs and falls in place nicely.
Thank you. Further comments on the amendment? Yes, Counselor Weaver, for the second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is the second time I've spoken to the amendment, so I'll try to keep it very Again, this is always difficult, but I'm beginning to lean against this proposed amendment, and I'll state my reasons for that, and I'll try to, I'll do my best to persuade some of you. It was mentioned that there's a 20% ten, and then we wanted it as a 20% flexibility, administrative flexibility procedure now, and it's been suggested this could be revisited later if we see an emerging need for that. There's a couple of issues I have with that. First, I think what's difficult about that suggestion for me is that it seems that there is a hesitation now to approve a sliding scale, and I'm not sure that a community, that we as a community, a city, that's invested in aesthetics and larramy with the developments is going to be any more willing later than we are at this juncture, so that's my first problem with it. The second is we've also discussed before the difficulty of leaving the bulk of these administrative flexibility procedures at the feet of the staff. You know, the city council's charged with making the policy decisions like this for the most part, and I think we should stick to that in this case so the staff can avoid being put in that position where someone may perceive favoritism or inconsistency. And that's the trouble with having those flexibility procedures in place that aren't outlined as concretely as they could be in policy. I think that's an awkward place for our folks to be put. So for those reasons, I think I'm inclined to vote against this and leave the sliding scale in place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale, for the first time?
Yes, the attorney, technical question, if I may?
Sure.
When the word "shall" is used, does that still allow the administration to have that 20% leeway, even though "shall" is in there? "Shall" is pretty definite.
City Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, Counselor Vitale, "shall" is mandatory. I'd read that as no discretion at all.
So the 20% goes out the window, it's "shall," whatever "shall be" is, that's what it's going to be?
In this paragraph, as I read it, it shall be 15% or 20% or 25%. There's no-
No administrative 20%.
There's no discretion.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. Actually, it's Third, I just needed a clarification on that from our planners. When we had spoken earlier, it was when we talked about how these different changes would stack on top of each other. If a development, say a 10-acre size came in for 25% reduction, they could ask administratively for another 20% on top of that, right? Or they could ask for that?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, yes, there's another provision in code that allows for up to 20% flexibility in any quantitative or numerical standard.
So it could be a 45% reduction in landscaping?
After the "shall" comes the "may."
Yeah, so it would be a 45% reduction in landscaping if they asked for 20% and received it, on top of the 25% already for the 40 acres. So you literally would cut landscaping in half.
Thank you. I'm going to make a very brief comment. I want to call it economy scale, but it's really not economy scale, it's balance of scale, if you will, large versus small. And it's just a vision that I have, but when I look at, and I think the high school's a good example, when you create a density factor on a large lot that's similar to a smaller lot, in other words, the density of those trees, if you will, it has a different look-
For a large, please.
-for a large lot than it would a small lot. And frankly, there's a point where you can get too much, or maybe not too much landscaping, there's a point where you lose the aesthetic value of the landscaping if it's too much. And I think that can happen on large lots. The high school is a good example. It sounds like there was a tremendous reduction in the high school that was required, but I don't think anybody that drives by the high school is going to look at it and say, boy, this is under landscaped. If anything, they're going to say, wow, this is, I've never seen a school that's landscaped as much as this high school is. And I think that's an example of what we're talking about here. When I think of large lots, I'm not thinking of twice the size of a small retail operation. I'm looking, I'm thinking of lots such as the high school, I'm thinking lots such as Walmart, if another big box like that were to go in. And so, given that value for me, I'm having a hard time supporting this, not supporting a, and it's not a large reduction. You're not talking about cutting it in half at 50%. You're talking about basically just reducing it similar to proportion what it should do. So that's my opinion on it, and any further comments before I open up to the public and then go to a vote? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Ms. Brown, thank you for patiently waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Margaret Brown, and I am on the beautification committee, and I'm sorry, I was at another meeting, so I missed the very first part of the discussion on this. But I will second what Counselor Somerville said. The beautification committee was very, very opposed to making a sliding scale mandatory, which it says "shall," for the larger the project, the more reduction would happen. And instead, we, combined with that, we had a lot of discussion about the point system and the scale and so forth. And if you look at our coalition statements on number nine and some other ones as well, if the requirements or the point systems or whatever the framework is allowed for planting smaller trees, if it's trees, more shrubs, and that that would still count and be as much landscaping as a large tree, we all, from our own experience, said, yes, in this climate, you plant smaller trees and water them, and they grow, and they make it through, hopefully, several winters. If you plant a big tree, you better be out there with your tent and taking care of it every day to make sure that it survives. And there were several examples given of folks who had planted larger trees, larger diameter trees, and they didn't make it through the first year or the first year and a half. Much rather see, and so then they have to replace them, so that's an additional expense. I would much rather see the flexibility come in, in what size plantings are done initially, and with the plan that the trees grow, the canopy comes eventually. Yes, it's a new place, and so it has new little trees, and they're going to grow up, and we all know that. So I would speak on behalf of the beautification committee. We really don't want to see that sliding scale with larger projects getting even more landscaping removed. Anything else from the beautification committee?
Any questions for the beautification committee?
Okay.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please? This is on the amendment.
Hanson?
Just to remove that section?
Yes.
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Shemway, absent, Schuster?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
No.
That is three yeses, five nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
So that amendment fails, we're back to the main motion. Further discussion on the main motion. Counselor Vitale?
Oh, question, I think in the current code, and-
We just changed it.
I can address this to Mr. Bloom, if I may. He might help me with this one. In replacement, and I'm not sure if this just applied, I don't remember if applied, just a residential, commercial, or both, but if, say, a four-inch tree or eight-inch tree was removed from a given property, I think the code said they had to replace it with the light diameter, or if it was a eight-inch tree, they could put in two four-inch trees or two-inch trees. Is that in the current code? Or did I have a dream somewhere?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, there were a lot of discussions about that back in the past when it was developed. There is a requirement that if someone is removing trees in a front yard, so the front of a lot, in conjunction with a building permit, they're required to replace the caliber trees that are removed. So if it's a 20-inch caliber, they're supposed to do a 50% caliber replacement on site, so then 10 inches of trees spread around the site. That's been an item that we've wanted to discuss, and it's an item on our list to bring up in the future. Most people have figured out a way around it, which is to get rid of the trees before.
Sorry I asked.
Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to introduce an amendment to Exhibit A, Page 9, which we're all very familiar with now, we've been looking at it for several minutes, where in Section B, the "shall" is changed to "may."
Is there a second for that proposed amendment?
I'm sorry, I'm curious.
Second by Counselor Vitale. Let me go back to Counselor Weaver and have him explain his reasons and what its ramifications and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do feel that the amendment has already been prejudged, but give me a shot. In the scenario that was outlined earlier, where the administrative reduction of 20% is requested and granted, and then we then have to adhere to this policy, perhaps this language may empower the staff, having made an administrative reduction, to then look a little bit, or strike that, reverse it. If we're going to use this, since it's a "shall," that may impact the decision regarding administrative reductions and provides some language for our staff to say, well, we followed a policy that's had this sliding scale reduction. You've achieved that. I'm not certain that your request at this point is reasonable for further reductions that can be made, you know, at our discretion.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
I'd be willing to remove that 20% reduction. If they have the sliding scale, I think that's just it right there.
I guess, this is the question I, okay, this is the question I would have for our city attorney. We're dealing with a change in our landscaping code. How much authority do we have to start dwelling into what, digging into the landscaping code and changing other things within it? How much is the parameters here?
Well, Mayor, Council, let me make sure I understand the question. I mean, are you talking about this issue?
That directly, yes.
I mean, you can certainly, I mean, there's nothing wrong with making an amendment to change "shall" to "may."
Okay, what about the suggestion that Counselor Schuster just made, that we eliminate the 20% altogether? Are we getting too far off of our subject or off of our main motion?
I guess I need a little help from planning on this. If that is in the main motion as amended, then you can address that language. Maybe planning can tell me where that is.
Mayor and Council, my recommendation is if you're going to be looking at completely eliminating the 20% flexibility we have through the process, that needs to go back to planning commission, and we need to start this process over again. That is a substantial change to what we're considering here before you. If you're just talking about specifically the sliding scale, that's in the purview, it's been discussed by planning commission, you know planning commission's decision. That is a, it's a different section of code as well as a different topic that has not been vetted through not only the public or any of these boards and commissions that we feel are appropriate to review this, but also the- we feel are appropriate to review this, but also the, this Planning Commission does not have any way in on that because it's not something we brought forward to them, so...
And your opinion on, if you have an opinion on Counselor Weaver's suggested amendment?
May's are arbitrary. They do not provide concrete direction for the user of the code. I recommend not using the word "may."
Thank you. Counselor Weaver, you had something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the second time and as quickly as I can. I'm not sure if I was able to articulate that as effectively the first time. The intention, changing shall to may, and I acknowledge that there's some concern, is that that can then be brought to bear on any administrative decisions regarding the 20% that exists now. If the sliding scale has been used, as opposed to shall, which means it will be used, that can then have some bearing on whether or not further reductions that can be made administratively take place. Trying to avoid the 45% scenario that we discussed earlier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville.
I will need help from the Planning Department and the Attorney, but I think I would like to propose amending your amendment to say, change the shall to may, and also prohibit a 20% administrative reduction on when this sliding scale fee is used.
Point of information, Your Honor, I think we received some guidance from our planning staff as to what steps would have to be taken if we were to introduce that type of amendment.
No, she's just talking about this.
Hold on, we've got, we've got a proposed amendment, I think we have amendment on, not a proposed, but we're, an amendment on top of an amendment.
There is no second.
Could you repeat that, and then I'll see if there's a second?
I can, well...
And then I'll go, then I'll go to, well, repeat it, then I'll go to Stephanie, Attorney, and then I'll go for a second.
Okay, that sounds fair enough. So, before I make the amendment, Planner Tini just specifically told us, if we're eliminating the entire 20% reduction from the entire landscaping code, that's a different subject that needs to go back to the Planning Commission. If we're talking about restricting or eliminating the 20% administrative, minor administrative modification process on just the sliding scale fee eligible lots, that's different. That is in our purview. The Planning Commission has seen this. So with that being said, I would move to amend Counselor Weaver's amendment to include changing the shall to may, and in addition prohibiting the use of the 20% minor administrative modification procedure on any eligible, any developments eligible for the sliding scale fee in whatever section of code that is. Sorry, I don't have the number handy.
Three B.
In three B?
Three B.
Three B.
Okay, before I get a second, I'd like an opinion as to whether this is an appropriate amendment between the Planning Department and the city attorney.
Let me just speak to sort of parliamentary procedure here. The original amendment was to substitute may for shall, as I understand it. You wish to, in addition, amend his amendment to add, to leave may in there, yet exempt, if the may is used, to exempt this from the 20%...
Any of the sliding scale fee?
Right.
Just this piece, yep.
I mean, I think that that's appropriate, Your Honor, but I think, I'm talking about appropriate, sort of procedurally.
That's what I'm interested in.
I certainly have things to say about that, but I bet Planning has more.
Okay, but it's appropriate procedurally, so is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor Henry. Now, I will turn it over to staff as to whether it would be a wise idea.
Wise is for the council to decide.
Mayor and Council, the amendment is significantly different.
The elimination of the full section out of code, as Counselor Somerville explained it, is correct. I'm comfortable with the idea of reflecting the process, which is the minor administrative modification process, as an exemption. You're still using the word "may." You have no criteria within that section that gives guidance. It's still arbitrary. There's no, you're adding a section which says that we can, we're not allowed to use a process, which is the minor administrative modification process. However, we have no criteria as when we, as to when we should, may require or may not require it. By doing that, you leave the city open into being arbitrary in its decisions. You either need to require it or not require it, which is through the use of the word "shall," or shall require it under certain specific criteria that you deem as appropriate for developments. That's something that I will not stand up here and try to invent tonight.
I think Counselor Somerville wants to modify the motion.
Possibly. If, what I see is kind of converging here, is we're asking for, we want flexibility in these larger developments, depending on lot and what is appropriate. We, right now, we're stacking these percentages that will be asked for or may, and we potentially could be arbitrary there, and that's not a good thing for the city, but we still want flexibility. Before, I will put this out there for discussion before I do whatever with my amendment, but what if we tell the planning staff to come back with language, that instead of making the sliding scale reductions mandatory with a shall, or arbitrary with a may, what if we subject these developments that are this large sales, scale fee, to a different minor administrative modification procedure? So instead of being the 20% that applies to everybody, what if we establish the scale that they have here? I've lost it again, sorry. The two-to-five acre reductions, and the five-to-ten, and the 10-plus, at those varying percentages, as that is the administrative modification that they, that the planning staff can make. I think that that's really the convergence of where we're going here. It gives the planning staff that ability. It sets down what is expected in code. It's not arbitrary, and I think it gives everybody their flexibility, but because I think that language would be complicated, and we would need to really look at how we do that, I would ask, for the sake of our planning staff and our attorneys' good health tonight, that they not be asked to figure this out on the fly. So I'll open that up for discussion, and possibly move that that way.
Let me, our city attorney and our city manager.
Yes, Mayor, Council, as a legal matter, to buttress something that Planning said, I think it's very, it would put Planning, and then eventually me, or the city attorney, in a difficult position with the word "may" in this paragraph, without absolutely clear standards and decision-makers, et cetera, et cetera, because, and not to belabor the point, but if somebody comes in with a 10-acre development, and they said, well, you may do this, and Planning chooses not to, then you all know what happens, and it becomes a mess. So I'm trying to buttress what Planning is saying. The wisdom of all that is up to you, but I can foresee issues for Planning and then eventually for your legal department.
Are you referring to Counselor Weaver's amendment or Counselor Somerville's amendment on top of the amendment?
I am, Mayor, Counselor Weaver, and I'm sorry to have to direct it to your amendment.
Okay.
But to your amendment, that's what I'm directing my comments, not to the issue of exempting this from the minor administrative...
I think we have to deal with Counselor Somerville's amendment first. City Manager.
Council, if I could weigh in, I agree with everything that Bob said, and Derek and I were just discussing. It seems to me that the shall could be replaced. What I hear from you, if I'm reading the policy-making tea leaves correctly, is you don't want to set up a double coupon scenario, right? You want to say, if you're a large lot, and you shall get a reduction, you may not also get the minor administrative modification 20% in addition to it, right? So what Derek and I just discussed is, you're setting up an either-or scenario. So you revert to the shall, and then you say something to the effect of, and if you shall get the reduction, you shall not get the minor administrative modification under this section, something like that.
Let me back things up.
Point of parliamentary procedure, Your Honor, and it truly is. At this point, it may make more sense for the motion-maker to withdraw the motion with an eyeball towards what we're constructing on the fly here, so...
I will withdraw my amendment to your amendment.
Well, let's wait here, so...
Second degree.
With the understanding, this is the second, I believe, or wasn't Counselor Vitale, with the understanding, on my motion...
I'll do your motion.
Excellent. That we are now working towards avoiding the, I love the term, double coupon scenario. I withdraw the motion for the amendment.
Thank you. Let me go to staff first.
Honorable Mayor and Council, there, some places have triple coupons, but it's down in Colorado. Number one, just to comment, with the minor administrative modification procedure, staff has required findings we have to make. We have five of them. That the modification is consistent with the comp plan and the purpose of the code, that the modification meets all applicable building and safety codes, so that doesn't apply to landscaping, that the modification does not encroach into easements, that doesn't apply, request of modification will have no significant adverse impact on the health, safety, general welfare, surrounding property owners, or the general public, or such impacts will be substantially mitigated. That's more for setback encroachments, someone building a higher fence adjacent to your property. The one that really is the nail in the coffin for most of these is, the request of modification is necessary to either address some practical difficulty or some unusual aspect of the site, other proposed development not shared by landowners in general, or to accommodate an alternative or innovative design practice that achieves to the same or better degree the objective of the existing standard to be modified. In determining practical difficulty, the approval criteria for variances, which are pretty strict to find at the state level, those shall be considered. Likewise, if someone's already getting one coupon, we're going to be hard pressed to give them a second coupon. But if you do choose to want to let them know that they are 100% not eligible, draft it up, scribbled one, that actually makes it work, where what you would do is add another subsection C after the B, which would go along the lines of developments requesting reductions in perimeter landscaping pursuant to LMC 15.14.050, F3B above, shall not be eligible for the minor administrative modification process of LMC 15.06.060J.
I'm out of room.
So...
Do you need any of that repeated, Counselor Somerville?
I can't do that.
No, I think I got it, if I say it quickly.
All right, Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to move that we add subsection C under number three. Says developments requiring, or requesting a reduction in perimeter landscaping pursuant to 15.14.050, F3B above, shall not be eligible for further reductions, minor administrative modifications under LMC 15.06.06.0J?
Second.
060J, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second on that amendment? Second by...
Is that what that says?
Hanson and Weaver.
By Counselor Hanson. All right, Counselor Somerville, do you have anything to add to your...
No, I think that this will sufficiently address the concerns that I had.
All right.
I appreciate the councils looking at this.
Counselor Weaver.
Very quickly, I'm very supportive of that, and frankly, I'm a little bit embarrassed because I am eating my own words in terms of putting the staff in a difficult position. It's not the easiest thing to do, to try to find policy that preserves flexibility but does not put the staff in a difficult or compromised position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
I like what he brought up there. He showed them that if they ever did ask for it, that they had to meet all those guidelines, and they would be very, very stressed to try to meet those guidelines. So, yes, I'll accept the amendment, yes, I'll accept his, that they have to meet these guidelines to even be considered for it. So I think they should be happy with what they've got.
Does this mean government works?
Oh, I won't go that far.
Just an observation, the 20% reduction is at the discretion of the staff, so, well, with, within parameters. So, I mean, we're awfully squeamish here, and they are still being told, you know, to accept something that is open to their interpretation, but I think it's a good solution the way we have it now. Just to observe, 20% is not written in stone either. It depends on the staff's interpretation of it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on the amendment to the main motion? Seeing none, city clerk, would you do roll call? This is on the amendment to the main motion.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shemway Absent Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That amendment becomes part of the main motion. We're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Yes, Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the council's patience, but I do feel that I have to bring this because it was also heavily discussed by the Beautification Committee. The, I would like, before I make the amendment, there was a lot of talk about history at the Beautification Committee, where we started, why we, why we're there, about the large developments that really didn't do any landscaping, that really left the community in a bind. We also talked a lot about the reductions that have already been made, and the changes that have already been made to this landscaping code on a couple of occasions. So what we started up up here is not what we have today. So, in accordance with Beautification Committee memo number one, I'd like to move that under Section 15.14.050, C, subsection one, that the 15% be changed back to a minimum of 20%.
Second.
Can you give us a page number?
Thank you, there's a, there's a motion and a second.
Page two.
And I'll go back to Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will put the landscaping, overall landscaping required, back to 20% of this, of the site. And, again, this was heavily discussed. You know, with the, with all of the other changes that we've made, we've lessened the perimeter and the buffer, or the buffer yards, we've really, we've added more points to the scale, so that they're essentially going to get less landscaping anyways, because grass is worth more, trees will be worth more, they have public art, they have all these other options. There was really a strong feeling by the Beautification Committee that they didn't want to reduce and go, frankly, go backwards to where Laramie was at. So, the Beautification Committee is asking that we keep this at 20% and work with the modifications that we have already put in here, and continue to look at this, but, and I also would ask the council to put the landscaping back to 20%.
So, I have, I guess I have a legal question. Did we not address this in one of our past amendments that we turned down?
No.
I don't, I don't. I wasn't here.
No, I meant tonight.
No, tonight, no.
No.
No, we did not.
Not previous either.
We talked about site perimeter.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, anyone from the public wish to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I ask that it remain the same at the 15, not go back up to 20. That was the whole part of the discussion. Of course, there is amendments, but if we start going back up, then we're putting, putting a little more regulation, a little more burdensome on the whole purpose of trying to reduce some of these requirements for the cost of development and maintenance going forward. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. I'll go to, just a question, Your Honor.
The two 20s would, the both 20s would change to 15, right, in that paragraph, right? Yeah.
You mean, they would change from 15 to 20?
Whatever it is, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that correction. Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, not, Ms. Mayor, I'm not speaking on behalf of Beautification Committee, just for my part on this, what I see here is a 25% reduction across the boards of landscaping. We've already done a lot of other stuff, we've already, there's already going to be significant reductions. This is a huge reduction. If we were talking about a 10% reduction, I think that might be a different conversation. But I think 25, to cut a quarter of your landscaping, just whack right off the top, I think that that's too much. We've already reduced landscaping several times in the past since we've adopted this code. And I do agree with the Beautification Committee that, you know, we've lowered the floor, and lowered the floor, and lowered the floor, and here we are again, whacking it another, by another 25... another, by another 25 percent. And that we're, we're just, at some point in time, we're going to have to take a stand and say, no, this is what we want our community to look like, and we need this to be able to bring in businesses and everything else. This is really, really important. I know it's important to the developers, it costs money, but if we don't have a good-looking community, we're not going to have new developments. We're not going to have new houses, new businesses, all of that stuff. And, and all you have to do is drive across Wyoming to see that very, very same fact. And Laramie looks completely different than most places in Wyoming, and I am proud of that. And I think that's why we have new businesses. Part of it is UL and all of those other places that want to come here, they see the value in the community that we have. So I ask that we keep the, hold the line where it is right now and just leave it alone.
Thank you. Other comments, my counsel? I guess I have a question for Staff once again, because I'm a little confused. When we're talking about a reduction in landscaping, we're talking about the overall landscaping within a lot, which includes the, the organic areas that's required along with?
Honorable Mayor and Council, yes, this is that 10,000 square foot lot scenario. Under current code, 2,000 square feet would have to be landscaped. Of that 2,000 square feet, a certain percentage has to be living, another percentage can be rock. The proposed, the proposal as it stands right now on the floor, that would reduce the area that would be required to be landscaped on a site to 15 percent, as proposed by Counselor Somerville. It would bring it back to its current requirement, which is that 20 percent.
And what would the ramifications be as to the number of, theoretically, the number of trees and so forth that are on the lot?
Honorable Mayor and Council, it wouldn't change the amount of trees. You might actually see a couple of trees reduced because they'll be getting more points through lawn grass or rocked areas. So you'll still have greenery outside. It might be not as vertical, it might be more horizontal, but ultimately, the developer will decide what works for them.
And I guess I'm interested in the staff's position as to the 15 percent reduction?
Honorable Mayor and Council, either one would seem appropriate. Keeping it the same at 20 would be fine. Keeping it 15 would be, or moving it to 15 would be fine. We do understand that that's the desire of the CDLC, which is a group we've worked together with, trying to decrease some of the development costs, so that could result in some more opportunity for some of our developments.
Thank you.
Just, I have just one other comment related to this amendment before we, well, actually, you know what? I'm just going to leave it. I'll leave it for the last. Go ahead.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Anyone from the, I think I've already gone through the public on this, so let's go to roll call. City Clerk?
Hanson?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Shumway absent. Schuster?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
No.
That is three yeses, five nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That amendment fails. We're back to the main motion. Any further amendments before we go to the main motion? Because I think we've kind of discussed the main motion indirectly through all the amendments.
We should have better hurry if you're going to make your nine.
I got five minutes.
I just have a very brief comment. I think part of the reason this has been such a complicated process for us is that the CDLC, which is a great committee that's made up of developers, brought all this stuff to us. In the future, I don't think that any of these type of amendments should just come from the CDLC. You need to have a committee that has your beautification representatives on it, your arborist, the city, the CDLC members, and it needs to go all the way so that everybody can sit around the table and discuss what is important and why it's there. Because all we have right now, all these amendments came forth because the businesses want to spend less money on development. And I understand that, but you didn't get the other side of the picture. So instead of having this fight where it's both sides, we need to do this together. And I think that the council should make a concerted effort to make that a policy, that these types of amendments don't come from just the CDLC, or you ask the Chamber Business Alliance to expand the CDLC so that it actually includes beautification members and everybody that deals with the other side of this. This is really, really, really important to our community. So it's, it's a suggestion, and I, I don't know if we have to bring it forward later, but I really hope that people take it seriously.
Well, I think you have the ear of Mr. Harrison, and he's taking it. He understands what you're saying. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Somerville?
No.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway absent. Henry?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Polikas?
Yes.
That is five yeses, three nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. After five meetings, we've accomplished.
Nothing.
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 Seriously, nothing.
All right. Next item on the agenda. In consideration of council, future council work session topics. Yes, Counselor Henry?
I don't know if I'm kind of jumping the gun on this, and I would need to talk to the Planning Department about it, but I've had, some of my constituents have been meeting with me and talking about the development in the West Side. And because we are, I live in the West Side as well, and because we are a bunch of non-conforming lots and our setbacks are non-conforming, our size, lot sizes are non-conforming, and we are concerned because people are coming in and knocking down old houses and putting up monster houses. And so I don't know if we need to talk about how we can do an overlay or if there's, you know, we've talked about redevelopment or Randy Hunt used to talk about a neighborhood plan or something. And I don't want it to go the way of the tree overlay thing that we did. We don't need to do that, but I don't know how much buy-in we need from our, from the residents and et cetera. I just don't know how to approach it, but I know that it's real heavy on a lot of people's minds over there.
And I've asked Mr. Tini to come up, just to comment as to whether this is an appropriate work, can we achieve something in a work session with this issue?
I mean, yeah, the work session would at least provide some direction as to what, how we might want to tackle the issue. I mean, the general issue's known. We hear from residents and we, we're starting to see development. And to be honest, you have a viaduct that's going to, that's going to change the West Side pretty significantly. And so through that, you know, there is some basic discussions that probably need to have as to what that might look like, planning documents, so neighborhood plans, and then does that result in overlay zones or things like that to provide whatever direction we're trying to go, so.
And I've heard support for it. I assume there's other support for it, councilors, so we should put it on the work session.
Thank you.
List. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other work session topics? Okay. I'll move on to the next one, which is public comments on non-agenda items by signing requests. Do we have any?
Can I thank the greasers again for the property they donated for the Pocket Park? Is that okay to do this?
I have to comment. I have to wait for tomorrow. I think we'll wait next week.
Okay. I'll wait till next week.
Perfect. Item number 16, Counselor Hanson.
I move that counsel adjourned.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Somerville. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.